And the countdown.
Red light, red light, red light, go.
Boom.
We didn't get the day without a furlough sleeper.
How'd that happen? Did I give them the day off?
No, that was yesterday, but those of us who are trustees for the real world work. We're not just students for the real world, we're trustees for the real world. We don't take off on all those silly government holidays. Somebody's got to work to keep things running. You worked yesterday, didn't you?
Welcome to the Central Texas College Board of Trustees Meeting for February the 22nd, 2022. Our invocation be read by Trustee Hollinger, followed by the pledge to the American flag by Trustee Pierce, followed by the pledge to the Texas flag by Trustee Bill Beebe.
Right with me if you would. Our dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together today and being called for your team to help guide this institution and others to stay on the path that you have set out for us. Look on us kindly with mercy when we manage to fall short of your goals and your plans. After all, it's your will be done, not ours. We also remember the first responders and those others who come to our rescue when we fall short. Forgive us when we have not followed your plan. And the Lord's people say in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texans, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We have a quorum present, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may address the meeting through the Central Texas College website. Item two is Consider Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting for the Board of Trustees held on January the 25th, 2022. A copy of that was provided in your read ahead. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Will they be approved?
Seconded.
Most been made to approve and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. It carries. Item number three is the chairman's update, and I'd like anyone who'd like to address topics for discussion or address additional items of interest, with the presentation limited to three minutes, to come forward at this time. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the chancellor's report. Ask Dr. Adie to come forward, please.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to have Dr. Ariaga here from our social science department. She is a full-time sociology professor here, and I'll tell you why she is here. So, at times, we receive a request from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to nominate faculty members to serve on the Texas Framework Field of Study. And Dr. Ariaga said she had the opportunity to do so. We nominated her, and she was selected, so she served on the subcommittee for sociology. So, the subcommittee is composed of faculty from two-year and four-year institutions. And then they talk about the courses that should be part of the transfer framework, and then the recommendation from this work group goes to the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee. So, she served on the committee, and I'll ask her if she would just share a few sentences with you about what she does there, or anything she'd like to share.
Thank you, Dr. Adie. So, first off, I'd just like to say thank you for providing this great meal and inviting me here. So, I've always felt very supported here at CTC, and I think that's just another prime example of that, so thank you. On the sociology subcommittee, we were, the main goal is to improve transferability of courses. So, we are revamping the curriculum for students that choose to major in sociology. The plan is that once students choose a sociology major, when entering the two-year institution, the courses will transfer as a block to the four-year institution and will be accepted per the new Senate Bill 25. So, this would prevent students from having to repeat identical courses because of, you know, whatever the issue is, but preventing them from having to repeat courses once they transfer out to the university. So, you know, this is supposed to happen seamlessly for the student, and, you know, it helps them with issues with costs, of course, and time. And I think I've experienced, or this was a new experience for me, I've never been part of a committee like this, and I have to say that it was really great for me to understand how we can help students across the state, right? Because the transferability applies to students statewide, not just here at CTC. Of course, I was there representing CTC, and I kept that interest at heart, right? So, any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and we have some pictures here. So, the pictures that you see are from a conference that took place from the 7th to the 10th of February. Dr. Carter, the chancellor, and I went to San Antonio and went to the Council of College and Military Educators Conference. So, you see multiple pictures there. On the top left, you see Chancellor Yanopoulos with the board, and I want to say he has been on the board, I have to look here, I have multiple dates, so he's been on the board since 2001, so he has served for a long time, so you see him with the other board members. That was during the reception on opening night. So, on the top right, you see Chancellor Yanopoulos reading the scholarship recipients. He has been instrumental in, you know, reading the applications and screening students for scholarships. On the bottom left, you, okay, so there's a young lady next to the moderator, she has a red shirt and a gray jacket on. So, this lady is Rachel Miles. She is a student here at CTC, and she was part of the student panel that talked about experiences in college and different, you know, different types of services that they've used, and overall what they would like to see changed, and she was an absolutely outstanding representative for CTC, so we were very proud to have her on that student panel. And then on the bottom right, you see the chancellor was part of the president-executive leader panel, so those questions evolved around military education, and so, of course, the conference had a lot of great sessions, some general sessions, some breakout sessions, and so it was great to attend and take some information with you. And one other thing I would like to share with you, and that goes for Debbie Havens too, so Debbie Havens and Chancellor Yanopoulos, they both received CCME Service Awards, and it says, "For your dedication and commitment to CCME and your service members, veterans, and their families." So, Debbie Havens, you have been part of the scholarship committee since the chancellor became chancellor, so I guess for the last six years or so. And the chancellor has been on the board since 2001. He has been the historian and scholarship chair, and then he also served as the CCME president in 2017, so again, well-deserved award, so great service that you provided. Okay, I didn't know if I had to do that or not. So, the next slide is the Faculty Art Exhibit that is open. It is in our library on the upper south side, and you see different pieces of art. So, what we have here are, I think what you see are some paintings there, but there's also ceramic and jewelry and other types of art. The artists are professors, or the artists are professors Julie Andrade, Lisa Tenon, Jeremy Haynes, Winona Alexander, and Regina Ellen. So, this exhibit still goes on until April 5th, and of course, it is open to the public. So, the next slide, we shared something with you before, but so here are updates on these. On the left, you see the Fine Arts Music Program that recently announced three members of the CTC Choir and one band member, they all received All-State Musician Honors. So, we have Jovida Castro, Ashley Demers, and Lucas Fisher. They're part of the All-State Choir, and then we have Hector McSkid, he is All-State Symphonic Band. So, they happened to be in San Antonio the same week that we were there for the conference. We did not see them, but they were in San Antonio at the Texas Music Educators Conference on February 9th through the 12th, and the students performed with other All-State musicians in concerts. On the right-hand side, you see, I shared with you that we have a couple of students, we have Paola Rivera and Fallon Engelkins Kelly. They were selected as the Irene Ryan Acting Nominees to represent the CTC Fine Arts Department, and these students are going to participate this week in the Kennedy Center American College Theater Festival. It will be held virtually from February 24th through the 27th, and they will compete against other students from two and also four-year schools. So, we will let you know what the turnout is. Of course, we wish them good luck. All right, so we had several retirements that we celebrated this month, or last, no, hold on, which month, February. At the end of January, we had Chef Ramona Lazo retire, and you see her on the left top. We also had Dr. Renee Henry retire. She was our department chair for mental health, and she was with us for many years, so she retired as well. We had a nice ceremony. Then on the right-hand side, you see in the middle Ms. Deborah Walker, so Dr. Garrett asked me to share with you that she retired as well. And then we have one more, that was Barbara Merlow, so she retired at the end of January as well. This is a picture of our Sweet Treat Bakery. So, the Sweet Treat Bakery is in our student center, and students prepare the meals, so you, there's a different menu that's out. So, the food can be bought on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:30 to 10:30, and if you are on campus or you want to make it a point to be on campus, I highly recommend the bacon twist. Very good. Bob, is that correct? The bacon twist is it. I think that's Dr. Carter's slide.
Ms. Payson and I are here together because we thought these would be two separate slides, and she'd be speaking to one and I the other, but since they're both, all the pictures are up here, I'll speak to the specific CTC presentations from last week, and she will speak to the Texas A&amp;M. On your left, you see, well, this month, CTC has planned several presentations in honor of Black History Month. We had two last week, and we have two more this coming Friday, this coming Saturday and Monday. And what you see on the left, the Planetarium gave a showing of Selma, which chronicled Dr. Martin Luther King's historic march across the, from Selma, excuse me, from Selma to Montgomery in securing voting rights for black people. And so, that was shown this past Saturday at the Planetarium, and then the other that you see on the right-hand side, last week on February 16th, the CTC Hobby Memorial Library hosted a virtual live event in which CTC Professor Kimberly Pace, out of Anchorage, Alaska, gave a presentation on civil rights history, and specifically, she gave it from the perspective of a global, and she put it in the global and US context, and part of what she talked about was the contributions of black soldiers in the various wars, because we were in all of the wars throughout our country, throughout our nation's history. So, and then on this coming Saturday, the Planetarium will show Harlem Hellfighters. And Harlem Hellfighters, let me just read to you, it's the story of the 369th Infantry Regiment, originally known as the 15th Regiment of the New York National Guard. The unit was exclusively made up of African-American soldiers and became one of the most decorated units of World War I. And that will take, that showing will be held on Saturday at 6:30 in the Planetarium, and then on Monday, it will culminate at the Hobby Memorial Library with an in-person event titled Black History Month: A Military Standpoint, and retired US Army Chief Warrant Officer Herman Brown will give a presentation at 12 o'clock noon, so if you're able to attend, that would be nice. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Payson.
Good afternoon. Last Thursday evening, I had the privilege of attending the Black History Month celebration. It was co-hosted by Central Texas College for the Center for African-American Studies and Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, along with myself, that attended Chancellor Yanopoulos, his lovely wife Nancy, Dr. Robin Garrett, and Ms. Brenda Cooley. This annual event focuses on the contributions made by African-Americans in the greater Colleen-Fort Hood area communities, and Mr. Horace Grace and Dr. Michelle Carter were featured during the event, which was providing, provided both in person and also virtually via YouTube format. And CTC will be hosting the event next year. Thank you.
Going to item five on the agenda, discuss and consider approval of the January 2022 interim financial statement and investment reports. Mr. Liberty?
Sir, hopefully everyone has a copy of the financial statements. There's a couple of things I'll point out here. It's through January, so we're just short of halfway through the year, and really what you're looking at, the numbers are based upon fall enrollments, fall classes. That gets us through the January timeframe, and then February forward, we're starting the spring. Just to remind everybody a little bit, we talk about this a lot, but the spring normally is a little smaller than the fall, and the summer is minuscule. We fight for everything we have tooth and nail in the summer. So, when you look at these numbers, you can see that through January, we're down $1.6 million year-to-date. And as a reminder, and I will probably remind you this every single month this year, because it's important to remember, a million dollars of that is related to the performance bonus that we awarded in December. That, that's a million dollars that would have made a difference in these numbers, but just so you know the picture where it is, we still would have lost a little over $600,000 through the fall semester. Our spring enrollments, which were finalized last week, were down 9.4% from the previous year. However, that doesn't sound good, and it's not, obviously, but the prior year, when you look at spring '21 to spring '20, we were down 16%. So, we're starting to hack at it a little bit, hopefully, and we'll get back to maybe closer to where we used to be, but based upon those numbers, you know, we're going to have a very hard time improving on that $650,000 loss, as well as the million dollars that you throw in there for the performance award. So, the bottom line is probably going to be red this year. I almost don't see that there's any way that we're going to be able to stop that from happening unless something truly remarkable happens in the rest of the academic year. You will remember that we talked about this a bunch when we were preparing the budget and finishing the financial statements last year, that there were some items that we have delayed for quite a few years that we included in this budget, and that is also helping to contribute to some of this loss, but they were items that we had foregone for several years and really needed to be taken care of, so we did not fall behind on what we provide to our students in form of service and educational needs in the classroom. So, the only bit of good news that you could look at whatsoever, but it's, I guess it's good news on one end, but on the other end, it will cost you, as you know, inflation is running rampant, but because it is running rampant, rates are on the rise. So, where we were looking at rates, you know, a year ago of less than 1/10 of 1% in some cases, Charles, I actually was able to secure a bond last week that was at 1.2%, which I can't remember the last time I got something over 1%. So, that's nice that we might start maybe to make a little money on our investments, which we didn't budget for very much, so anything that we can do above and beyond what was anticipated will only help with the bottom line. If you look at the numbers currently, it's kind of strange. Our investment number year-to-date is actually at a loss, and the reason why it's at a loss, that's because as those bond rates go up, the bonds that you currently hold, that you bought at lower levels, become less valuable. Now, we're still getting our interest paid on them, and that when they mature, we'll get the full amount at maturity, but the current level of them, if we were to sell them, we would suffer losses, because who wants to buy a 0.2% bond when they can buy a 1.2% bond? Quick economics lesson there, that was free. But, sir, the numbers are, they're not good. Dr. Carter and I had a discussion this morning about the numbers, and we've got plans to schedule a meeting to talk with the chancellor, but want to make everyone aware that we're doing the best we can. There looks like there's light at the end of the tunnel, but boy, it's pretty dim. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware.
Any questions, or Mr. Liberty?
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Do you know where everything is that we have that's spread out around the world? I assume we have no outposts in Ukraine.
No, there's nothing in the Ukraine, sir, but we do have, you know, and this even goes back to the last time I was in Europe for the college, which probably is three-plus years ago. You know, I remarked to the dean when I was there, because I've made several trips over the years, so where is everybody? I mean, we were, we were at some of the, you know, we were at Rammstein, which normally has troops everywhere, and I mean, I was looking for people in uniform, and even then, they were already forward-deployed out in Eastern Europe. So, while we will have troops out there, and we may run some small classes that are run by probably some active-duty soldiers, we don't really have anybody that's assigned out there that's CTC employees, per se.
With that in mind, I know we chase a lot of naval contracts. I would assume we also don't have any contracts with either Ukraine or the Russian Navy to teach onboard their ships.
No, sir, not at all. No, sir. We actually do a little bit of business with them on occasion, but they're, they're sending guys in that are training at Vilsack, where we were running some of our contracts, and we're teaching wheeled vehicle maintenance and small-arm maintenance, and we actually teach some of the, not necessarily Ukrainians, but some of the other NATO powers that are out there, but those folks are coming into us, we're not going out there, they're coming into Vilsack in Germany.
Mr. Beebe?
We did transfer $3 million to reserves from last year.
Last year, sir, we transferred a whole lot more than that. Last year, our bottom-line number was the largest ever in the history of the college. It was, it was pushing $20 million, sir.
Yeah, but I mean, the adjustment with COVID, you took that out, and we're still ahead.
We were still ahead $3 million if we didn't have COVID. That is correct, sir. That is correct, sir. If COVID, if COVID didn't bless us with the $19 million of federal funds that we received last year, we would have still had a positive $3 million bottom line.
Is there a motion?
Move some move.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the interim financial statement for January. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six is discuss and consider approval to exercise a third option period for the contract with PBK Architects Incorporated for the period of April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $750,000. Mr. Harmson?
Yes, we had discussed this at the board workshop. You have the details in front of you, so the college needs to exercise the third option period of the PBK contract. That would be the recommendation, that to exercise the third option period of the contract in an amount not to exceed $750,000.
Any questions?
Would we approve this request?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the request. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item seven is discuss and consider approval of sponsorship requests from the Central Texas College Foundation, an amount of $3,000 in support of the scholarship fundraiser golf tournament. Mr. Standeville?
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver and CTC Board of Trustees. As mentioned last week in our board workshop, under CTC Board Document Number 427, the CTC Board of Trustees provides sponsorship funds for events, projects, and activities selected. Community partners, nonprofit organizations, and service clubs submit funding requests. The CTC Sponsorship Committee evaluates and recommends these requests, and the CTC Board of Trustees approves amounts of 2,500 or over. Today, we request your approval for the $3,000 for the CTC Foundation request for the 28th Annual Foundation Golf Tournament on April 22nd, 2022. All proceeds raised from the tournament will go towards student scholarships in Central Texas College. As a title sponsor, CTC will be featured on a towel giveaway, the banner, program, signage, and tea box. The college will also receive recognition on all social media platforms in 12 months of the partner's page for the CTC Foundation website. Finally, CTC may enter one team of four in the tournament at no cost. This completes the request.
Any question, Mr. Standeville? And I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and seconded to approve the request. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eight is discuss and consider approval of Ms. Sherry Hoffpower for a foundation board member. Ms. Payson?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chairman Weaver. Last week, at the board workshop, I presented to you three nominees for membership appointment to the CTC Foundation Board. Today, I ask for your approval on each of the proposed members for the board membership. First one, Ms. Sherry Hoffpower, resident of over 40 years for the Copper's Cove, Colleen area. She has extensive experience in advertising, marketing, sales, and volunteer work in our community, so I ask for your approval on Ms. Sherry Hoffpower.
The motion been made and seconded to approve Ms. Hoffpower. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
I would like just to add, I've known Sherry Hoffpower for, ever since I've been there since 2008, this would be a great add.
Thank you, sir. And motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine is discuss and consider approval of Mrs. Annie Cooper for the foundation board member. Ms. Payson?
As presented prior, Ms. Annie Cooper is a resident of the Colleen-Hawker Heights area for over 45 years. She has extensive experience in the banking industry and has served as a volunteer in our community in different aspects. Ms. Annie Cooper for approval for membership.
Motion been made and seconded to approve Ms. Annie Cooper. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10 is discuss and consider approval of Mr. Clarence Enochs for the foundation board member. Ms. Payson?
Final nominee, Mr. Clarence Enochs. Mr. Enochs has been a resident of the Copper's Cove, Colleen area for over 40 years. His extensive background working with area nonprofits and community relations. For approval, Mr. Clarence Enochs.
Motion been made and seconded to approve Mr. Enochs. Motion been made and seconded to approve Mr. Enochs. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payson. Item 11 is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by the board members. Start with Mr. Armstrong?
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to see us consider moving back to the board.
Okay.
I agree.
We'll put that on the agenda item for an op, topic for discussion at the workshop. Next item is announcement of the time and location of the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, March 22, 2022, at 1:00 p.m., and a board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 29, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. Not an executive session scheduled for today. Subject, any other comments or motion?